We're doing well. This long time.
Just.
Oh, she's wonderful. We kept trying to say.
Yeah, I mean. Everybody's if they were getting their shoulders up. Eyes shoulders.
Yeah.
Not supposed to do that either. Yeah, they're missing it. They need to be told. You don't need to be all that, but they need to be.
Well.
They can't. They can't have eyes everywhere, but.
They can't.
Be aware. Be aware. Small crew.
I'm not far. Pull up.
Two minutes. Uh, there's some more around because there's quite a few. Boys out today. And something's going on, so.
Steve.
I get I get a nice. I get a nice uh, listener.
After hours on Friday.
We got the evening hour.
Good news.
Are you talking? Oh, you're talking with that?
I'm not. He's operating.
Yeah, he's not. He says don't stay.
Yes, we did.
Is it Wednesday that he sent it?
All right, here you go. Thank you.
I think you had a little help from that and others.
Four sixteen.
The boy. I'd have to consider you get that photo.
Well, good.
Thanks.
We're going south.
No, when the weather gets started, it was beautiful day for the weather. At the end of the day, we got joy.
Steven, when they hit thirty one, so.
That's the real deal.
I don't really. It kind of what those days.
Thanks.
There's a good one now, um, the AI. And and security there.
I'll tell you. All right, it's nine thirty. All those that so choose is painting lunch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will be needing to work with everyone present. First item on the June this morning, my junior town engineer looks at project updates. And I have this one for you. He just dropped it off.
Judges. Um, real quickly, Bill Grant, there's nothing new this week. Talking to the DOT, probably not gonna hear me until uh, January, perhaps. Um, I wrote my heart bridge study. Uh, nothing new this week. Should be hearing back shortly. Subdivision down, nothing new this week. Project in the Corey Hill. Rio Road, nothing new this week. Nesty Valley, again, nothing new this week. Um, Homer on A fourteen East has for continued last week for the four homers have been installed. Uh, Kenny is constructing concrete patches over three of the pipe, you know, and patching of the fourth pipe is to occur this week. Probably going to asphalt patch that one. Let it settle over the winter. It's uh, deeper and bigger, so you don't wanna. You don't wanna. The concrete on that one. Um, the Durapactor is operating on Locust Road. Um, not sure if that operation's finished this week. And then we'll probably move on to Freeport later in the week. Uh, Bridge two eight E Backflow Operations will continue this week. Bridge one twenty six need the clearances have been completed and will likely be that in January. Frankville Road letting them likely public one twenty six. Uh, we're still waiting on the DOT to finish up their side on the one twenty six, just FYI. Annual report was approved on by the DOT on Tuesday. Hackney Nelson was in the office last week and finished it off Thursday. And then Vogel's been on the striking quotes. Uh, it's get three fifty at the B thirty two and be done at the end of October. Um, information will be done uh, after we've done the meeting.
I've got a question on striping. Will they? So with that loose rock in the middle, they go and either blow that or brush that before they.
If it's on. So there isn't much between um, Festina and Austin, but between Fort and Festina. Um, last time I drove that, there was, there was more. Um, the idea would be to broom some of that off.
Yeah, I drove it this morning and it it really sealed up nice. There's not a lot of gravel on that road, but you can see the center striped. It's. There's there's a fair amount of gravel.
The idea here is that the the striking is not going to be perfect and that we would have to to stripe it again later, but but before we do that, we would probably lightly brush the the center and and sweep it off.
Yeah, there's zero dust. I I drove it this morning. You don't see any dust at all. So I mean, that's done what was supposed to do.
And then that's the report. And then there's the ongoing uh, discussion around two eighty eight and three tenth. Um. I gave the recommendation. Um, I'm looking at it this way. It's um, kind of have do one or the other. We change the two-way intersection, two-way stop intersection to a four-way stop intersection. Or we um. We take out the hill and leave it as is. So it's that if the reason for that being is take out the hill, there's really no justification for four-way stop. That's kind of the, that's kind of where we're at. So that's why I'm looking at the board to, you know.
Because that stop sign, when you talked about last week, is that is one. Some of you were gonna go look at it.
What uh? What's the traffic on that? Is it justified the amount of expense to cut the hill down or the four-way stop was easier?
Uh, and cheaper. It would be cheaper for the the four-way stop. We're talking about a a week's worth of work here roughly. Um, that being said, I the just the intersection being safer for, you know, however much longer that those roads stay in and in use. You have permanent solution. The stop sign is um. To me. I don't know if it's less safe over time, but it it's it's just. The stop sign, the four-way intersection is it's weird because it would be four ways. Uh, instead of just a two-way controlled intersection. Um, if I'm going off memory, talking about uh, forty vehicles per day, east, west, both ways, and then it's like sixty twenty or something like that, north, south. And I might, I'm not, I don't have that precisely down, perhaps. That's kind of what we're dealing with. Um, so what we're doing is be stopping about forty vehicles per day roughly. Um, and that's just. Typically, we wouldn't have any stop signs there. Um, someone back in the day must have said, hey, we can't see to the left, so we're gonna stop traffic so that people look left and right before they go across, trying to make it safer that way. Um.
So a typical intersection with good sight lines with those vehicle counts would just be uncontrolled.
It would be uncontrolled intersection, correct. Um, and that's, that's where I'm just, you know, improving the uh, taking the hill out. Uh, at some point, it gives us that option to make it uncontrolled and and be as safe as the rest of the intersections and throughout the county, but um, this is the Board of Supervisory Roads. I could, I I can see a justification for putting stop signs there, but I would not have that if I take it out. Um, so that's where I I kind of lean towards taking out the the hill just because it's a.
Safer, longer term.
Which is usually the long-term flexibility, take that signs out later if that's what the traffic patterns or somebody else wants to do it later. That it gives you that flexibility. Um, but.
Other other hills, your money would be better spent cutting down.
I mean, there's, there's, there's.
I'm like, no, that's.
That's good.
And that's what I would. Like down the line instead of.
Yeah, so I mean, there are, there's. There's plenty of. I mean, thinking about it being, you're able to do it now uh, when it's not summertime, so I it's it's a. I would, to me, to me, I'm, to me, I just, it's, if if because of the boards, you know, the board is watching out for the roads. I'm more than happy taking the direction of the board on this, either which way.
Looked at it and um, the sight distance is concerning.
Yes.
I'm not a traffic safety expert, so I don't know what the rules and regulations around it are on that. I would trust your judgment on this. Can you fill me in a little bit?
I've all the call, all the calls I've had is they would prefer stops.
Yes, so.
That's every call I've had is. And I was called again. I was called again this week too.
With.
I wonder why it wasn't up yet.
With the, with the stop sign, we would put a stop ahead sign.
Yeah.
Giving them advanced warning would be a big yellow sign with a stop ahead.
That's.
That's, that's what we would do. Um, the the issue that people are concerned that I've most for most issue that I've heard about it is when school buses are stopped at the stop sign. They're pulling through and they just can't get enough speed to get all the way through before the time they cross the hill and look at that's, that's the the reason that they want the stop sign is is deploying through. So couple of things.
Also for people that use it, right?
Yeah.
They they live up.
Truck drivers and these are farmers.
Sounds like.
Everybody, everybody want the stop sign. That's.
So to to do a stop sign, what would be required would be I need a, I need a, it needs a resolution to get a resolution. There needs to be uh, justification from the, and it's site, site, stopping sight distance requirement to do this. Uh, it. Board needs more economical to use funds elsewhere. Yeah, this is something I can draft up over the week and have it provided for as a resolution next week. So what? So just I'm just looking for direction here um, for next week. So we would need to get that on the agenda for next week for a resolution. Um, and and a way we can go.
And we can always revisit it if it.
Yeah.
And becomes an issue in years complaints of. And that would give you a better timeline of being able to set up a construction project out there, even though it's only gonna take possibly a week, but this time of the year, you never know what.
It's starting raining and then you get.
Yeah.
And and yeah.
It's been on my mind to do just because it's something that, you know, Brandon did uh, out on town line. Can knock it out real, real nicely and you can do everything. I don't have to create plans or anything for it, so it's not a huge undertaking, so.
Do you have any idea how thin the soil is out there and all of a sudden you start dropping it down and you come into solid rock?
Uh, don't know the answer to that, so.
I don't think I've gotten through there, I don't think. If you were south furthest, south further you would, down toward.
Yeah.
Up in that area, it's pretty, pretty black.
I mean, anything you take out would be better than it is. Uh, and and the other issue on the, on taking that out is this would steepen up the.
Driveways.
Driveways for for the farmers.
Um, yeah.
There they don't. I have heard through the grapevine, they don't want that.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it's consensus from.
Sounds like it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, getting then.
Well, it's not a permanent, I mean, it doesn't have to be a permanent thing. We don't have a lot of money invested in it if it doesn't work.
Correct.
Yes, yeah. Cut it down. See how this goes for six months.
Then they put the signs up now or?
Not till after.
Not till after the resolution. So the resolution will happen on uh, on Monday, and then I'll send out a sign guide.
Monday afternoon.
Stop that. Okay, the stop ahead, we may have to put on order, but that.
But if you order it now, you can have it ready for next.
Yeah.
Week.
Yeah. Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, just going back to that nesting, you said that it wasn't seeded, but do you have?
It's seeded. It's not. It's just, it hasn't, it hasn't uh, come, it hasn't. It's been seen. It hasn't germinated, it hasn't. Provided enough cover. Trust me, I that's, that's the thing that I want to happen every day of the week. Just get that out of our, off of our plate, so.
Good.
Thank you.
Consent agenda?
Yeah, I've got the minutes. The DA monthly report and the sheriff's quarterly report.
Who approved the consent agenda?
Second. Have a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. In favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, same side. Motion carries your names. Uh, committee reports.
I've got a couple of paper help committees this week. Is safety committee still meeting at one today, Ben?
As far as I know.
Okay. That's what I've got.
All right, with the conservation board, that management for the Freeport Woods. All that was looked at by the state forester, and actually, there is a state forester has a plan for eleven different locations within the county. Uh, the total of that grant or total of the project is a hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred dollars, of which the county would be on for twenty percent. Uh, or roughly thirty-eight thousand, five hundred. But it's my understanding it can be done in segments, so the Freeport one would be the first and that would come in at a total cost of seven, eight hundred to conservation. Uh. There's talk about adding riprap to the dam wall at Walden Pond, which comes in at a cost of almost ten thousand dollars. But uh, she's gonna apply for a grant. If we receive that grant and we only have a ten percent cost, so.
Good.
So out, nothing by waiting and try it for it.
The twenty percent is for conservation then?
Yes. Yep. Uh.
They had looked at any logging on that?
Well, state foresters, the one that's putting the the whole timber management plant together, so I'm sure that that's included in it.
That's what she implied when she presented it with they would look at.
Mm-hmm. Uh, they had roughly a thousand kids at the Trump or tree. Last year was a little over nine hundred, and they said there was right around a thousand this time. So it's a pretty busy place out there when that's going on.
It's a good event.
No, Nesty had seeded uh, stormwater detention project is being wrapped up. Walden Pond's getting wrapped up and that Greenbelt uh, water detention project's underway at at this point in time.
Is that the one out there in nine?
Yeah, full of Nesty out there.
That's huge. But they, it's only, you know, that's drained probably fifty, sixty acres. That's a joke when they're spending. And draining nothing. There's maybe twenty acres by the John Deere store. It's it's holding. They spent over a million dollars to do that. And the next draw over, that ain't gonna stop. Shoot, there ain't forty acres. That's gonna stop. I mean, it's they gonna stop a hundred acres of water. That ain't nothing. You got thousands and thousands of acres coming down through there. It's. Yeah, for what they're spending. Yeah, we ain't gonna.
Those project locations were Black Old Hollow. Lepton Gloves, Jiron Greenbelt, Freeport Woods, Lake Meyer, Rodgway Park, Marlene Educational Forest Reserve, Mulholland, Nesty Valley, Walden Pond, and Willers Woods. So it's kind of spread all out over the county.
The Mulholland, they had the volunteers built a shelter out there.
Yes, all at Mulholland.
Jan Dan's still was the one that headed it.
It's good.
The courtroom, the lighting and change, lighting, painting and so forth is done. Carpet gets finished this week. Uh, there is a couple of things occurring in the judicial department. They'll go in the magistrate's courtroom. That'll be all complete. Their state is probably gonna be coming in uh, the first part of this week to put the electronics back in. Then the carpet will finish up by the end of the week and it'll be complete. That's, that's the status of that. There's still some more materials that are to be moved upstairs from Historic Society in the old jail. Uh, probably. Uh, they're probably more than half done, maybe a little more than that, but they're planning on as they're getting through, getting things in and trying to categorize and the rest of that. I think that's, they're making progress. This won't be too long and that'll be vacated upstairs. We can then figure out what some point in time.
My next occupant will be.
The next occupant may be for long term.
Lock them up.
Although we do, we still use uh, and uses one. You, you. No, the, there's two, there's two cells that are used by the the court department for for long for long-term storage. That's right there. Uh, CSB building. You you saw that letter over the fiasco of the water meters. Well, that's, that was the general warning letter they sent out to the entire city that not that we were any, we were the only bad guy or whichever, but the the whole saga of this is a lot more than just we got a letter and we haven't responded. That's not it at all. There's two water meters out there on that property. One of them in ours. It was, it wasn't until Friday that they found the second water meter. It's a, it's a David Wadsworth shop down the two buildings down the way.
Has he been paying the bill?
We don't know. I'm gonna ask Ben to ferry it, ferret that out because that apparently was put in when Spectrum owned that. They had a community garden and they only wanted to pay the water bill and not sewer, so they put a meter in down there. I don't even know how it didn't freeze. It's in the back part of Dave's shop back during the old railroad section of it. It's not heated or anything else. And that meter's been back there. And who knows? I would be willing to, my gut would say we've been paying it.
We've been paying a water bill. I don't, so what?
You pay up whether you use it or not, you pay to have.
You still pay for a meter, but and then what's still unknown and to be, to yet be determined is if when that building was separated and the gym and the other portions of it were split off, whether or not that's still on the same meter. So that's not known yet either. So that's.
Your intro as an ongoing saga is appropriate.
It is a saga. No, you know, we might have been paying for the water for the whole block.
Yeah, we might have been.
Oh, it's for the kitchen too.
Maybe it's a good thing we had to change the water meter. We may have never.
Did we change one of them?
Well, no, because the the contractor's been in there already. And first, they couldn't, they couldn't find it. They didn't know if it was, where this building actually connects at one point, if it was behind a door or the second meter. They're getting ready to tear that all out when they finally found the one down the street. But then when they went in to look at the meter, the contractor says, oh, I can't replace that one. Your plumber has to replace that one. That's too big for me. It's no bigger than the one that was replaced down right here for the courthouse. Now, we don't know where the meter's coming from yet. And that's whether or not the city has run out of money and decided now that we get to pay for it or what. I don't know the story on that yet, but it's still part of the saga.
Well. It was explained if you didn't have them do it, then you're gonna have to do it.
Oh, no, they, he wouldn't do it.
The meters.
The meter's still, and the plumber, countrywide, is still trying to find out from the city about the meter because is it the whole meter or just the reporting device that goes onto the meter? It's because some of these cities that have had to replace the the system that was the reporting part of the meter was on three G cell and three G cells going away. So all these meters in many of the towns have to be replaced like Ridgeway because they no longer communicate. The cell system doesn't exist anymore. So it it gets into more in the weeds as you go into it, but it is progressing. It'll be fun to see how it comes out.
I had to hire a plumber because my shut off was behind the, ahead of the the meter, so I had to change the shut off so they can change the meter. So. I understand why, but it's like.
Yeah, those meters generally have like a ten-year life before they start going backwards and not reading the way they're supporting.
No.
Yeah.
By the time we get it installed, it'll be going backwards.
That was uh, that's just the way it is.
I did have a juvenile detention meeting on Friday. Things are going along okay, but the reimbursement level is not equitable amongst the state. Tends to be the larger detention facilities get the lion's share, even though they don't have a whole lot more occupancy, so like Polk County, that whole thing. Uh, it's a pretty inequitable reimbursement structure and Sam, our guy, has been trying to lobby to get that more equitably dispersed the funds. And so right now, it just basically rewards people for having beds whether they're occupied or not. So people build bigger facilities so they have more beds. Anyway. But things are going well. We're still well bored on that.
Fair. Any items next? Uh, first of which is a sound public hearing for the White Flynn rezoning request.
Um, we got that penciled in for ten o'clock on the third.
Someone like to take action? I'd move to approve the zoning requests for ten AM on the third of November. I'll second that.
We have a motion in a second to set the public hearing for the White Flynn rezoning request for ten AM on the third of November. Leave the resolution.
Aye.
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
I also pass a unanimous vote. Next up, appointment to the Board of Adjustments.
Sent out the letter that Tony had put together. There were no appointments on the P and D commission this year, just the one on the Board of Adjustments.
And that is.
Austin Dodd.
Reappointment?
And Tony said he was willing to serve. And that has already expired.
Term it was the end of October, yeah, or in the. Any fact, yeah.
To appoint, reappoint Austin Dodd to the Board of Adjustment.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the reappointment of Austin Dodd to the Board of Adjustments. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same side. Motion carries your names. Motion carries unanimous. So Steve, what are we gonna do, shut our water off and see if there's no water?
That's not a bad idea. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Well, I think they'll shut us off if we sign if less.
Uh, I think there is probably a water shut off valve that we can turn off right there at the meter and find out. A few bathrooms and certainly anybody in the DHS side of things, so. I can't imagine that there's. You know, I mean, the food pantry, you know, they're not, I don't think they're particularly using any great amount of water down there.
They just have a wash sink in the bathroom.
Yeah, they got one small bathroom.
And just as like a kitchen sink washing.
Oh, I, I did learn that, uh. Ben, that the, the, that we, we thought was the common break room in there in CSB, that's only used by Spectrum. The, the DHS uses, what was that? When they have somebody there, as their little break room, they won't use that one over there where Spectrum is, so that's not, no longer is that. Common space.
You know, Spectrum does programming mills and one of the kitchen apps, it's also a break rooms, so I mean.
Well, yeah, but those, but see the, uh, Spectrum, pardon me, food pantry uses. They have it on their own side, they don't use that kitchen over there as far as I know.
No, they don't.
So I mean, that whole, both those kitchens, the break room and the kitchenette are both used by Spectrum. Down there, so it's really Spectrum space and not somebody, not another one of the entities within the building.
Which, yeah, the DHS don't have enough people there. No.
Which basically affects the. Per square foot rate because we were splitting that up, but if it's only Spectrum, then that actually makes their rate a little better for them. Probably probably wouldn't, maybe they don't care if other people use it, it just happens that only they're really use it, so.
Well, they can't act, nobody else can actually ac- access it. Well, food pantry could come through into the kitchenette.
Well. DHS is supposed to have access to.
But they don't, but they don't, no. That front room is their bake or break room.
But theoretically, you could maybe use that for something else completely.
Yes.
Yeah.
Or we could use that.
I mean, you could put something else in that.
Or we could use what they use for the break room for something else.
Well, then, you can't lock that off. You'd have to move the doorway down.
Yeah.
Just be, it'd be one office, yeah.
Which we needed an office for somebody, that's.
Yeah.
Easy.
Next officer, earning, no, that's still using the DHS in the corner.
All right, next up on the agenda, Andy Vandermark, County Attorney.
Yeah, fully.
Nothing comes to mind.
Goes in your courtroom the end of the week, and the state's coming back in electronics this week, is the latest.
Well, uh, we'll move to the small courtroom unfortunately tomorrow, I guess. Could be long crowded, I think around eleven o'clock, but we'll make it work.
We've got nothing for us.
Not today. It is looking good up there, I think, uh, when they finish that carpet, get the rest of it done, it's a huge improvement over what we have, so. In time.
I think they changed some of the switching so that the lights can be left on over the judge's bench and the rest of it turned down if they've gotta use that projector screen. So that's a, that's an improvement.
Did they actually put in switches?
That's the.
It used to be, you had to just flip the breakers on and off.
I think it's gonna be switches.
Okay. All right, I can't.
There were no switches, you just had to go flip the breakers on when you wanted. I haven't heard any more from them after I told them they couldn't go last week and.
They were great this week, so, I mean, had.
Yeah.
I don't know when they come back.
So I'm thinking, I think it was maybe Thursday, they wanted to use it this week, so I don't know whether four we done.
Four will be done, it'll be done on Friday, but not on Thursday.
Another week yet.
All right, anything else?
Thank you.
Good.
Thanks, Andy. Get your steps in.
All right, does anyone have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and second for adjournment, all those in favor, say aye. Let's not, now the county is late, it's just one little.
How was the wedding?
Ah, it was interesting. Rehearsal went through pretty good, except I did have two pages in my binder in the wrong spot, which wasn't a big deal, made some notations. Wanted to change some things Friday night, so like, back to the house we're staying at. Pulled out the papers, made some changes, put it all together and then the binder fell apart. I was trying to put it back together and I had other pages from my rough draft in the reception, so sorting through it all.
Zero officiating.
Thank, yes, and I'm going through it, I go, well, I got it, so. Went up there, we did all our pictures, everything. We have fifteen minutes before the wedding started, people are getting watching again, I'm reading for one quick and like. Uh, I'm missing a page.
And what was missing?
The vows.
Good job, Dan.
I'm skating out there, quite jokingly, the car driving through over a stable and I'm going through everything. Everything went through perfect after that.
I didn't, you didn't have time to be nervous.
Took away a lot of the nerves. You know, I was just looking for the right, you know, was there was a lot of rain and rain. To at least disappear by noon or something, and they were like, Saturday morning, I'm like, this.
Not too hot.
West Union.
I went to West Union this night for a meeting, or yesterday afternoon.
A library?
She's been having, she was doing wrestling practice, her back started hurting again, so. As of right now, she's off of.
Further down vine.
She can ride her bike or go running.
Of course, that's. One road.
Yes, that's, that's gonna take you the time or. Where she goes, then the more it starts hurting, so you know.
Yeah, it's actually.
Pretty simple to get to.
But then the event I was going to, you couldn't go through the main library doors, you had to go through the back door. And the signage is on the door and the door is on the tree. Next to the garbage dumpster, so you're like. Should wait forever to find the building and the entrance. I'm glad you had a good wedding.
Yeah, yeah, whole story is.
Right.
Okay, bottom line, there's only two left.